More Packers?
More Packers, yes. For Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Fund, the current revenue assessment is $550 assessment rate. The seawall replacement reserves are used for special projects identified in the five-year plan. For BSI Canal Maintenance, there are currently two assessment rates in place. The $460 that was for the operating assessment rate and $95 dredging assessment rate. And again, the seawall replacement reserves were used for the special projects. There's nothing really new on the Marina Fund. Building Fund, again, is doing okay. They are requesting, the current pro forma shows two full-time employee positions estimated in fiscal year 19. Again, when we get to the issues, there will be requests to move one of those positions up. And then the equipment replacement is a five-year plan. The gas tax funds are doing okay right now. And again, the additional 5% gas tax fund, we do have the transfer, the $459,000 from the general fund to continue with our plan. So going on to Section Two is the financial policies, and all the policies were included, but the only change currently recommended is the extra half percent to move from the seven and a half to the eight percent.
So that's been our plan all along. Is anybody changing course on that?
Okay. So we will use that in building our budget. So going on to the last section is the issues that are facing the city at this time. And we did provide different millage rate scenarios that could happen or possibilities if, for consideration. So currently, the plan is using the $672,000, which includes the $500,000 use of reserves for the drainage program. And in that situation, we could still maintain the 3.1969. If the city would choose to want to have concurrent revenues equals current expenditures, which is a goal of the city, and have, and use no reserves at all, it would require an increase of .059 to the millage rate. That takes out the $500,000, though, for the drainage program. If the city would prefer to use 172,000 for, of reserves, but not have the $500,000 for the drainage program, that would maintain the 3.1969. Or if you would want to do one of the two scenarios of having the 250,000 of drainage or 500,000 of drainage, and still have current revenues equal the current expenditures except for the 172,000 use of reserves, you'll see the effect of the millage rates there, depending on which was chosen. Any questions on that? So this is a discussion of effect of limiting the ad valorem revenue to just the increased value only. So instead of using a 6% increase, we're only going to take the, looking at using the construction value increase. So if we retain the full value of the increase, which is the existing and new construction, again, you can use the whole 672,000 of reserves, and you would still be able to maintain the millage rate. However, if you, if you do limit the value of new construction only, the use of reserves needed to still have the same plan in place would be a little over $1 million. So the effect on the millage rate would be a decrease of .1278, but that's using additional reserves. We've provided areas of consideration for reducing the shortfall. Again, that's trying to make current revenues equal current expenditures. So the two bigger ones are the drainage program and the paving program. And again, you could do anywhere from zero to the top of the range. Reduction of the Aqua Consulting contract or marketing that's in place. And again, you can do anywhere in the range, depending on what parts you wanted to decrease. We could reinstate 1% sales tax funding for PD vehicles. That starts in fiscal year '20 to '22, and starting in '20 is when we had stopped funding that amount. And because we're using a five-year outlook, that savings for fiscal year '19 is $75,000. Use of grants for fiscal year '17 for the PD boat and delayed right-of-way dump truck, this would be $50,000. And that one, those two obviously will happen right away, so those will take place. Funding major equipment from 1% sales tax, and that includes the fire ladder truck, the road grader, and a front-end loader over four years, you'd have $280,000 savings in '19. A freeze on merit-based employee salary increase, or a reduction from 3% to 2% or 1%, would be anywhere from $0 to $213,000. This excludes the fire education increase that's in there for our union contract. Deferring implementation of a pay and classification study that is ongoing right now. Those amounts have not been included in the long-range plan, so there is no savings at this time. It would just be a delay in implementing that program. Eliminating the estimated 3% operating increase, holding all expenditures flat, would be anywhere from $0 to $103,000. And again, there's certain expenditures that go up, so if a division has to hold flat and they have certain areas that are going up, they would have to decrease somewhere else. Deferring an urban design comprehensive plan study in fiscal year '19, there was $25,000 available for that. And eliminating other various programs and related staffing, these would be determined at a later date. If anyone is, if there's an interest in any of those programs being eliminated, so that the amount is to be determined.
The, these last few slides are, we haven't shown you that in a couple of years. And the reason we're showing them to you is that every now and then, people raise the issue of, instead of keeping the millage rate the same and capturing all of the taxable value increase, why not just capture construction-related increases only, thereby allowing us to reduce the millage rate? We can do that. And what we're trying to show you is the impact of that early on, on the operating budget. I mean, it's January. The fiscal forecast will change over the number of months, but some of these issues will not change. And we're presenting to you the impact of what that means if we just use construction growth dollars only. We did that back in 2000, in the 2008, '09 range, '10, when we had the recession. And it took us a long time to recover from that. So we're not making any recommendations right now. We just want to show the public what that means if we go back to that philosophy. And again, our goal has been to try and eventually get, in our general fund, current revenues matching current expenses. We're not there yet. We're getting closer, but we're not there yet. So we thought we would present to you this early on, just to, just to let you know what things you would have to consider based on our early forecast.
I think our policies that are in place with the 8%, half a percent a year going back into reserves, and, and if that's our policy, then using some reserves to balance at this point, I think is prudent. If we could keep our, you know, we put the programs in place for drainage and roads. Roads have been in place for a long time now, and that really helps our city in looking the way it does. I mean, there's no doubt about it. People don't come here during the, the budget hearings and demand we take the road paving out of the budget. They do not do that. And I think the drainage, you know, we heard, what is it, two years now? We have, we know we have issues with drainage that we, we need to solve. So I'm okay with using some reserves. If we were to look at putting anything back in the 1% sales tax, I think we have to look at that as a total whole and see where we're at, and do the projections for that, for this cycle that we're in now, before we tinker with that at all. So I'm okay with using some of those reserves that you showed, and just at this point, keeping the millage rate flat to continue the programs that we've put in there and, and keeping the services. And if it comes down to what you said, there's some growth there that we could, we could look at lowering the millage, then we, we look at that at the right time.
I would agree with that. I, I would tend to favor either maintaining or lowering, because I, I know that many of our residents don't get raises themselves, and so the, the feedback I've received is, is that they appreciate us being as, as fiscally prudent as possible. So, but again, at the same time, we get lots of demands. And, and like you said, the drainage program is one. Even though we know we've discussed thatch and things, we've had residents email and say, "Don't tell me about thatch." So it's just, just take care of it. So at the same time, we, you know, we're trying to take care of things as well. So there's, there's a cost to that.
And I think other issues that we've discussed, like the pay and classification study, that's going to be coming. I mean, just with our city management leadership, we know that we have to put some funds into succession planning. We have to be ready for the next turnover. I think over this next year, we'll see. I know, you know, some of our departments have openings. We see what kind of applicants we get, and then we have to deal with it from there, because the cities around us and the counties around us are staying very competitive. So that's another thing that's on the back burner, that we're eventually going to have to deal with that.
Well, you're looking at one of our succession.
Yay! Well, that's one department out of how many? But no, just to be competitive and to attract the right kind of people that want to serve our customers the way we want them to be served. Lynn?
I agree with everything that you've both said so far. I, I definitely think we should not even consider looking at an increase in the millage rate, based on all the comments and feedback I've received to this point. I also think we need to be considering what could happen if we don't get the state funding for the seawall assessment reimbursement. That apparently seems to be an issue at the moment. I think we also have to consider, we've got the Bird Pass cut-through funds that would probably go into next year, into the budget for next year for the seawall assessment. We've also got the issue of the school district potential increase tax. We've also got the, the, there's all kinds of things that could be plugged into next year's tax bills.
Right.
And, and of course, then the new homestead exemption that may or may not pass. So there's all kinds of variables that could dramatically change the complexion of the tax bill for, for 2019 and beyond. So I would like to see us at least keep the millage rate the same, if not decrease it. I agree with what everybody said.
I agree. Also, looking at what legislature does, whether we're going to have any more unfunded mandates to come down. So that's, so probably more towards April, we can probably plan with more intelligent decision-making.
And if we could look at the 1% specifically?
We, yeah, the 1% plan was we were weaning the purchase of police vehicles out of there.
Yep.
And we still think we need to do that. We cannot rely on the sales tax for purchase of, like, regular vehicle, not, no, we're not talking a fire truck, but regular vehicles. You just can't do that. It's not stable.
Agreed, agreed.
Can we get some kind of an updated spreadsheet on projects that have been funded by that 1% sales tax?
Yes.
And what, what is still forecasted to be covered by that money?
Yep. Our budget process is starting, and we'll be sending out the capital outlay forms, the capital project forms, to the departments. They'll return those back. We'll plug them into the pro forma, and then we'll be able to show you all that. And we can have, again, we always can make the list of the unfunded type of projects so that you can review based on what available balances there are.
What, what growth in that fund are we looking at? I know you said generally 1% to 3%, but can you say what it is, or do we need to wait?
Um, yeah, I think we'll have to wait on that. But I mean, it has been, we did up the projection during the last budget process because they had been coming in better.
Better, okay. Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think anybody has any idea what really gets funded by that money, because it's, it's kind of important.
I mean, they do, but we need to refresh our memories.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
For those who are new to budget discussions, if you come back, like, quite a bit over the next, till July, you're going to get a lot of budget discussion. So if you're excited about it, we hope to see you back. This is ongoing now.
This is ongoing. This is the start of the discussion. So we're not making any decisions today. We're going to really, in April, April meeting.
Right.
We're not done yet.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll go on with some more issues. These were just some of the items that you could consider for the general fund specifically, but. So regarding, are we done with the general fund at the moment? Okay, so we'll go on to the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Fund. So these are the current estimations related to Hurricane Irma. And again, the range is kind of large, because FEMA comes back with a percentage of miles or number of miles, and we still think there's, they need to re-inspect and do some more. So that's why we have ranges. Currently, the range for the repair cost is 30 to 40 million. The districts match to federal and state funding. That means the city's maintenance fund would be approximately 4 to 5 million. That's 12 and a half percent. The increase to the annual assessment, assuming we finance and do it over 10 years, repayment plan could be anywhere from $75 to $100 annually for that period. Yes?
Can, can somebody enlighten me about, I just heard yesterday that we are potentially in a situation where the state is not committed to pay the 12 and a half percent?
No, it's not that they're not committed. FEMA, FEMA's been with us every step of the way.
Yes.
They have inspectors here, they've inspected the canals with us. We have every intention, every anticipation, that FEMA will still kick in 75%, and that the state will still kick in 12 and a half percent. Nobody said no. Nobody has, we don't have a document yet that says they will, but they've, we've got no indication that they're not. They're with us every step of the way. So we're marching along as if our match is 12 and a half. Until we actually see it on the dotted line, you're right. It's, it's, we're marching along the way it's been in, in the past, and we have no indication it's not. The reason we're showing this, and you're going to see another slide with Burnt Star Isles next?
Yes.
We may want to, as a staff, we may be recommending to you, actually first to the Canal Maintenance District.
Right.
That we increase the assessment this year, or next year, to start building up the dollars for the city's match. It may be coming to the, it's going to come to the canal districts in their upcoming meetings, and then it'll come back to council, depending on what the canal districts say. So we may be asking to increase the assessment for the seawall repairs in this upcoming tax year.
Okay. I mean, if that could lessen some financing on the backend, I think that's a smart thing to do at this time, but we have to wait and see what they say as well.
Now, you can see what the, you know, if, if the impact is $75 to $100 based on a 12 and a half percent match, you see what the impact might be if FEMA and the state back out. It's going to be significant.
It means we are dead in the water. No pun intended.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, "That means we're dead in the water, no pun intended."
Let's, let's keep our fingers crossed and keep recording FEMA as we are doing now.
It's, we meet with them weekly, right now, so. Okay. And of course, the staff will review any ways to save in that fund as far as the annual maintenance program, since we're doing this bigger project.
Right.
And see how that impacts.
And then after that, I mean, we'll have 15 miles of new wall. We probably won't need the robust program that we had, you know, for a couple of years anyway, so.
So for Burnt Star, Burnt Store Isles Canal Maintenance Fund, they had a lot less damage, so their range is 1.1 to 1.5 million. The district's match would be 140,000 to 200,000, and they would be looking at a $26 to $40 annually increase. And that was only assuming a five-year financing, since it was such a smaller amount. And again, we will continue to look at not only their scheduled maintenance, but the dredging project was completed right at the end of fiscal year '17, and we'll look at that to see if that dredging portion of the assessment could be lowered a little bit.
So again, as it stands now, FEMA and the state are on board until we hear otherwise, and we have not heard otherwise. And then if we do have an inkling that it may go in a different directions, then we'll, we'll start reaching out to our federal legislators.
Sounds good.
We have our special, special use reserve fund, and currently, there's $3.9 million available in that fund. However, 3.5 of that is from the Fish Village sale, and then the remaining amount is reserved from Hurricane Charlie still, as they have not even finished the final audit, from FEMA from that project, from that hurricane. So currently, options to consider for our special use reserve fund is retaining the proceeds from Fisherman's Village sale until the legal challenge is resolved, or you could appropriate on a case-by-case basis as needed. If the council or the city would want to increase the general fund reserves to the standard of the 16.7%, it would require approximately $1 million to be transferred for that use. Or funding could be set aside for the Ponce Park rebuild project. And then another option for any additional funding coming from Hurricane Irma outside of seawalls or debris removal, which would go to those specific funds, we would keep those in reserve for future hurricane needs.
Now, this chart hasn't changed since last year when we presented it.
Right.
The city attorney will giving, will be giving you an update on the Fisherman's Village legal challenge at the end of the meeting. But right now, when we do get a final design for Ponce Park, we were planning to hopefully use some of these dollars to do that project.
That's fine. For the utilities fund, the reverse osmosis plant construction, the bid is just going out, so, but, so we are waiting for that to come in to determine the, the final total costs. The current fiscal plan includes the $40 million cost currently, and assumes 50% grant funding from Swift Mud, the full. We don't currently have a commitment from the 32.2 to 40 million, so that is an issue. And then other sources of funding, such as financing, would be needed if grant funding is not approved for that portion.
I don't see any, any roadblocks to getting that approved that we know of. I mean, we have our team in place, and we work closely and well with Swift Mud now, so.
Yep.
I think we're past most of those hurdles.
I would, I would agree.
And back when we were attending those meetings, there were a lot of people coming back saying, "Well, our project went over budget," and they, you know, they kind of shook their finger at them, but then they were, they were agreeable, so.
The other big project that's currently under study right now is the Septic to Sewer Project, is being looked at in conjunction with Charlotte County. So that will be brought to you once the study's completed.
Yes, it is. I'm looking forward to it.
Mainly because the county will be, the county's had some workshops on this, and they're going to have some more in the future. And one of the proposals, nothing's concrete yet, but one of the proposals was that in order to help pay for Septic to Sewer throughout the county, including everywhere throughout the county, that all property owners would chip in. So we'll see where that discussion goes.
For the sanitation fund, again, these are just to make you aware, but during the budget process, we'll be looking at a couple items. And the first one was that the rates were not currently adequate to fund those future equipment needs that were out in 2022, unless you're going to start having ongoing financing. The other thing that we're going to look at this year is the cost-effectiveness of the 10-year PACA replacement schedule. And if you remember, we used to have a seven-year replacement, and then during the economic downturn, we went to a 10-year replacement program. And we're getting some indication that that might not be the best for right now, so we're going to look at that and see. For the building fund, again, there was an anticipated need for inspector in 2009, and the building officials recommending the additional staffing moved up to fiscal year '18, which we'll, we'll bring back to you. And again, current fees are currently adequate to fund that position. Citywide, is this the succession planning that you mentioned earlier? And we're currently in a pretty competitive market. Things that we're looking at are retention and training of current staff, attracting qualified candidates as our employees retire. The paying classification study is currently underway. It'll take about three to four months to complete. We'll have results in possible, different implementation plans that could be looked at, brought to council when that is complete. Any questions?
Any other questions for Kristen?
Thank you very much.
Is everybody coming back for the next budget discussion?
Yes, they are. Okay, we pulled 6B till, until the next council meeting, so now we'll move into 7A, unfinished business, Gilchrist Park Activity Center Research Report. Oh, we didn't take citizens' comments, did we? Okay. Timeout, Chuck. Okay, now would be the time for citizens', you didn't catch it either.
I know, I didn't.
Okay, now would be the time. If you'd like to speak on the budget that you just heard, you can include that now, too. So citizens' comments on the long-range financial plan, you can, the Gilchrist Park Activity Center Research Report.
Actually, you did.
I did?
Yes. That's when you mentioned about, at the end, hearing my report on Fishville.
Oh.
But that's okay.
Okay, okay, here we go. Citizens' comments, long-range financial plan, Gilchrist Park Activity Center Research Report, the Isle Yacht Club pickleball request for organized play, the event permit taste of Punta Gorda, consideration of the lease, leash ordinance, and update on the Burt J. Harris Act claim regarding sale of Fishville. Those items, if you would like to speak on those items, state your name. For the record, you have three minutes.
For the record?
So, sorry, we don't have a buzzer, so I'm just going to give you, you have the lights?
I've timed it three minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
For the record, my name is John Byrne, 2520 Rio Grande Drive, Punta Gorda. Thank you for allowing me to comment on the Gilchrist Activity Center. I am the 2016 past Commodore of the Punta Gorda Boat Club, and I represent the club today. In consideration of the limited space, we asked our members not to jam this meeting and exchange promised I would speak on their behalf today. Please don't misinterpret their absence as a sign of disinterest. The changes being discussed for the Bayfront Center, Gilchrist Park, and our boat club are the number-one priority for our 300 members and the 1,500 people who use our building. We've been involved with the city for the last four years to manage our transition in 2021 on our lease. In addition, there was a multi-year schedule put together for the Gilchrist Activity Center several years ago. That piece of work represented today is on the schedule we expected and contained nothing dramatically surprising to us. But there are three things we'd like to highlight about the report. One, our very reason for being is boating, but we are also a social club. Being on the waterfront is critical to our continued success as a club. As such, we especially appreciate the insight in the report that, quote, "People like the ambience of being on the waterfront, even if the activity they are doing is not a true water-related activity," end quote. Two, we plan about 50 boat outings per year, including kayak trips, day cruises to local destinations, overnight power boating, and overnight sailing. We think the detailed report under-represents that activity. Three, one of the most active groups in our club is our kayakers. Our monthly kayak outings typically have 50 to 75 people on a trip. In the dozens of trips we've made over the years, we have never launched from our clubhouse and paddled off of harbor, in the harbor off of Gilchrist, never. It's too choppy, there's too much traffic, and there's not enough to see. We have, however, returned multiple times to Ponce Park and Alligator Creek. Although a kayaking presence at Gilchrist might attract casual, one-time, spur-of-the-moment Although a kayaking presence at Gilchrist might attract casual, one-time, spur-of-the-moment visitors to the park to try kayaking, we believe the primary focus of increasing kayaking in Punta Gorda should be Ponce Park, because it will draw repeat kayakers from afar as a destination to enjoy the area. But overall, our members' input was effectively represented on the matter of where we go from here to preserve the unique nature of Gilchrist Park. We commend the team that did that work. In closing, we look forward to being intimately involved in the future efforts that will use this report as input towards developing a concept for a replacement facility that all stakeholders are bought into. Thank you.
Thank you. You were right, that was right on, three minutes. Okay, we can't, that's fine, we just can't have applause because that interrupts the flow of the meeting, so go ahead.
David Martin, 3670 Bell Harbor Boulevard, Punta Gorda. I must first say how proud I am that the city government has taken such outstanding care of our riverfront and canal system. I've always found town-elected officials and employees to be receptive to ideas. In fact, I worked with Public Works to greatly improve the safety of two traffic intersections. There's one idea to which the town should not be receptive, the giving away of town parkland to a restaurant. Even if Punta Gorda were not already a dining destination, public parklands are public treasures and should not be in the gun sights of any developer. I am the one who wrote in the Charlotte Sun about what happened in Oyster Bay, New York. I want to give you a little more detailed history. As president of the boat club at the municipal marina in Seacliff, I had a number of serious interactions with John Vendito, the town supervisor now under indictment. There were issues with slip lottery system, costs, bathrooms, some of this might sound familiar, and a proposal to build a soccer field on public waterfront land. In every case, I had the feeling that Vendito always tried to do the most good for the most people. Until the case of allowing public land for a restaurant, I would have called him the finest public servant anywhere. I still have high regard for him and think he was persuaded by the restaurateur, who has already spent time in jail and probably a lot more to go, and the county supervisor, who is also under indictment. If the restaurant had not been allowed, none of the other issues that were later brought up would have probably been noticed. There are three morals to this story. One, waterfront land is a public treasure, it should be used as such. Number two, unless starvation is the alternative, restaurants do not belong on public land. Number three, good people can sometimes be tempted to do bad things. Please do not take any actions that would further confirm that.
Thank you. Let me just pause here and go over the procedures for public comments so we could have a nice flowing meeting here today. City staff, well, this has to do with the, each person will have three minutes to speak. Sharing minutes is not permitted, so I appreciate the boat club, you guys having your spokesperson. Form an orderly line and be ready to approach the podium when it is your turn to speak. After you approach the microphone, state your name and address if you would like. The mayor will signal to you when to begin. Speakers will address all comments to the council as a whole and not to any one individual or to any member of the audience. Discussion between speakers and members of the audience is not allowed. If you are reiterating another speaker's comments, please acknowledge that and add only additional content. This helps to ensure everyone will have a chance. Audience and speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. No applause before, during, or after each speaker. If you have supporting documents to display during the meeting, you must provide a copy to our city clerk. Council members will not answer impromptu questions during the public comment period. Thank you for your participation and cooperation. Go ahead.
My name is Robin Adair, and I'm representing Punta Gorda Rotary for our Taste of Punta Gorda in March. We've asked to block off the harbor walk part on the water, and the reason for it is to keep the integrity of our event. In the past couple of years, we've been very successful and had more people than we ever anticipated. And what happened, we only charged $3 to $4 for entrance, and what happens is we have to come police people, because we have people that are walking the harbor, and they're walking into our event, and then we have to come up and ask them, "Oh, we don't see your band on. Can you come over here and get $3?" So we want to keep the integrity and just block it off between 11:00 and 4:00 on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Connie Cantor, and I live at 1318 Colombian Drive. Thank you for the opportunity this morning to speak to you on behalf of the subject of Gilchrist Park Activity Center. I'm here this morning on behalf of our local scout community to address the future redevelopment that would affect the structure previously known as the Lewis Calder Scout House and its addition. My son's Boy Scout Troop 433 Punta Gorda currently meets weekly in the addition that we know today is the YMCA Bayfront Center, and we are very grateful that the Y has invited scouts back into its previous home. The original Scout House was built in 1952 and its addition in 1958. Both were principally funded by Mr. Calder, who enjoys a rich history in Punta Gorda. The Scout House is more than a necessary meeting place for our scouts. It holds a place in the urban legend of our community. There are scouting old timers in our district, which includes all of Charlotte, DeSoto, and Sarasota Counties. They still speak with great respect of Daniel Beard, the father of scouting in America, and his visits to Punta Gorda. He would always make time to stop by Boy Scout Troop Five's meetings. Though scouters have told me that once, a Troop Five scout asked Mr. Beard for his autograph, to which Mr. Beard whipped out his bowie knife and carved his autograph, his name, into the walls of the Scout House. Sadly, with a little research, it reveals that Uncle Dan, as he was known, wintered in Punta Gorda during the '30s, long before the Calder Scout House was built. But isn't it a great story? I so wish it were true. What is true is that, once again, thanks to the Y, there are Boy Scouts in the house. I want to share something with you, it's in the handouts that I have provided. It's an invitation to our Troops Court of Honor that was held last week. It was created by one of our scouts, who was responsible for planning the event to fulfill a rank advancement requirement. I'll call your attention to the location line. It reads, "Bayfront Center YMCA, the greatest of greatest of scout huts." Our Boy Scouts truly value their home. We must not ignore the past decision of our community, which made a home for Boy Scouts at the west end of what is now known as Gilchrist Park. It is our position that any redevelopment of this area honor that decision by including a fully operational and dedicated scout facility. And because a Boy Scout pays his own way, when the time comes, we would like to share with you some ideas about how we can help to fund our home. We trust that council will preserve our scout heritage here in Punta Gorda and partner with us in both planning and funding any redevelopment affecting the Lewis Calder Scout House. Thank you for your time.
Ron Ludwig, Akia Star. I am the current commander of the Peace River Sail and Power Squadron, and we have been here in Punta Gorda since 1972. We are a unit of the not-for-profit United States Power Squadron that was established in 1913. We began teaching classes at the Bayfront Center in 1993 and have been a continuous tenant of that building since then, except for during the Hurricane Charlie reconstruction period. We occupy approximately 700 square feet of the building, which is inadequate for our use, but there's no place else to go. We have conducted classes for thousands of Punta Gorda and Charlotte County residents over the past 25 years in this facility. Peace River Sail and Power Squadron has been recognized nationally as one of the best squadrons in the nation every year for the past eight years, due to our ability to perform our mission and our goals. We are used as a standard for other squadrons nationwide. Bayfront Center has been an integral part of that success. We applaud the efforts of the survey team and believe the response accurately represents the current users of Gilchrist Park area. The current buildings, Bayfront and the Punta Gorda Boat Club, being utilized daily or weekly by our residents, represents over 12,000 square feet of space. Punta Gorda does not have enough places to conduct meetings or hold events now. If you remove this 8,500-square-foot building, or both, what are you going to replace it with? Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Make your way to the podium.
Sharon Ramo, Bella Court. Just briefly, we started looking in Florida in 2001. We never bought until 2007, and it was Punta Gorda that won us over. And that being said, the parks is a gem, and any public park that was given to the people of Punta Gorda should stay as such, and the city should not cave in to someone with a bigger wallet and then, in spare of the citizens of Punta Gorda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob Fritz, Bernstein Isles. I'll comment on the budget first. I know Punta Gorda is trying to annex whatever they can to the city properties in Charlotte County. For years, one of the ways we annexed it was saying our tax rate is lower than unincorporated Charlotte County. That is no longer the case, okay? Our mileage rate, total mileage rate, is higher now than unincorporated Charlotte County, which is going to make it much more difficult to annex properties and probably lead to more tax abatements. On Gilchrist Park, I have to protest that, once again, the public is being asked to comment on a presentation that hasn't been presented yet, okay? Which to me is backwards. But on Gilchrist Park, question number nine, if commercial operations such as snack bars or convenience stores are available at the Activity Center, that's a question. Snack bars or convenience stores is a long, long way from a 250-seat restaurant that you're giving away to a developer. Thank you.
Thank you. You're more than welcome to stay at the end of the meeting. You can comment on anything that's been presented today, so I welcome you to stay. You can have another three minutes on any topic at the end of this meeting.
Good morning. My name is Lori Lanhardt. I'm a brand-new resident of Punta Gorda and Banyan Point. I just want to comment on the Gilchrist Park. When we were looking on where to relocate down here in Florida, Punta Gorda rose to the top, and one of the reasons, one of the main reasons, was the gem of Gilchrist Park. We live where we can bicycle to it, where we can walk to it, we use it daily, we enjoy the sunsets, we enjoy the music, we enjoy the gathering. I also exercise there. You'll notice one of the things I don't say is, one of the appeals was a restaurant. Now, I worked in government for 37 years, the last few years in a management position. I understand very well about fiscal constraints, fiscal issues, funding. I implore you to think about the unintended consequences of this development of the restaurant. Have you thought about traffic, parking, car accidents with the bicyclists and walkers? It's going to dramatically change the nature of that park. And for someone who just came here, for things like that gem of that park, I implore you to please think about that as you look at how to change the nature of that park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm the handout. Nancy, can I?
I'm M.J. Atkinson. I'm with the Friends of Gilchrist Park Committee and also here on behalf of the Punta Gorda Moms with something fun and positive, I think. I brought with me a guest, Dr. Bruce Neal with Sanibel Seeschool, and I brought him with me because of the Activity Center, hoping that this might be a cool way to incorporate kids' activities and possibly some adult activities. My kids and lots of the other moms in the area, our kids all go to Sanibel Seeschool in the summers. It's an amazing, it's a school, but the kids don't know that they're learning, and they incorporate, they incorporate things, I was going to have Bruce talk, but I'm trying to remember all the things we do, but they learn about the ocean, about their habitat, about where we live, and develop pride in our state and the nature around us, and they do cool things like paddle boarding and learning to, at least in Sanibel, learning to surf a little bit and just getting out in nature. And I think it would be an awesome asset to the Activity Center to try to incorporate young families, but I think there's also some ideas for adult activities that could be a potential added benefit as well. So just wanted to share that with you all and introduce Bruce, and I hope that that can be a continued discussion in the future. Do you want to add anything, Bruce? Okay, all right. So.
He's been to the Sanibel City Council, I can tell.
Yeah, I know, he's telling me the rules. But yeah, it's for future generations, and so I hope that that will be considered.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Dave Blair on Rancourt in Punta Gorda Isles. I'm the president of Learn to Sail at Bayfront. I'm totally unprepared for these remarks, but I would like to observe that when it comes to teaching kids to sail, you almost, in Punta Gorda city of, you need a ramp. The only ramp for manually launching boats is at bayfront. The space in bayfront has allegedly grossly underutilized. I disagree with that. Two afternoons a week, there's line dancing, which is packed. In the summertime, we're busy five days a week from 8:00 to 4:00, or 10:00, 9:00 till 3:00 in the case of the kids. On my list of to-do things is to try to partner with Charlotte Harbor Environmental Center to integrate a little bit about the ecology of Charlotte Harbor into our curriculum. That hasn't happened yet, from my bad, but I don't know if anybody from Chegg is here today, but at any rate, it's on the list. We will respond to the survey in detail when it becomes a little more explicit in what's recommended, but that activity, I think, is of value to the community, and I hope it can be continued. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Line up behind Mr. Skilicorn, please. If you want to speak, make your way to the podium.
Good morning. Gary Skilicorn, Punta Gorda resident. I think I'm going to offer a little bit of alternative thoughts associated with this. Looking at, let me just say first that I'm a Team Punta Gorda supporter, active volunteer, and I certainly recognize the work that they did associated with this study. In observation, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about it, but the outcome was two major thrusts. One is the desire to have a waterfront activity, and the other is what's referred to as a multipurpose meeting facility. Several years ago, and I guess I can speak that far back now, several years ago, when the first thoughts about the new library was being discussed, and thought came through my mind, what about the old library? I brought this up at the time, and there was no traction at the time, and it was, well, let's wait until we get closer to where we are with the new library. But guess what? I think we're just about there right now. That facility is owned by the county currently, but my understanding is it is viewed as access or will be access when the new library is opened. And I also understand that there may be other groups that are looking at that facility right now. In the short term, wouldn't it be great to have a short-term answer for the multipurpose meeting facility to repurpose the old library into that facility? Certainly, from a budget standpoint, it's very attractive. And I can't help but move into the longer term, too. I think you know me as a cause that I had been in the retention of the Henry Street property. Look at it in the long term, if you're looking for a land-based facility, and I have to admit, being on that waterfront is wonderful for meetings. I go there myself, but it is water and a really prime facility. But Henry Street property, if you're looking for location, that, think again, and you've heard this before from me, the new library is going to be there, the dog park, community gardens, history park, Fisherman's Village, linear path, linear path park, and there will be parking. So again, look in the longer term as possible utilization of that location. I think it has merits. Short-term, long-term solution for the location. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Make your way, please.
Good morning. Dawn McGibben, resident at City Punta Gorda, 620 West Marion. I've been here for over 30 years, married to someone I've been here for over 30 years, married to someone who came here in 1944. And I've been chair of preservation for a number of years. So I'd like to speak to the history of it. I was glad to see the scouts here. The oldest scout troop in Florida is our scout troop, started in the late teens, 1921, they reorganized. U.S. Cleveland, who many of you know, is a piece of our history. And he attended that and he also became a leader of the scouts. The building itself, Lou Calder, they're right, was 1950. He gave the money and the city allowed it there. Before that, there was a cabin that was brought over and they used that. So there's been scouts on that site longer than the 50s. In 60, they did some additions. So, and then it's all, this is public land that was deeded to the citizens of Punagorda almost 200 years ago for public use. So you've got something that was dedicated to the youth of Punagorda for years. You've got a park that's been dedicated and you've got council and citizens that have respected that stewardship for all these years. And to start taking it in another direction, I, I wouldn't want to be sitting where you guys are sitting. And so, like everyone else, I haven't heard a big discussion yet, so my points will probably be answered. Number two, because of the historic aspect of not only the Bayfront Center as we know it now, but the people affiliated with it, that is an historic structure. It's a contributing structure. It's also got names affiliated with it. That can open up some funding, grant funding as far as historical funds are concerned. So there's, I'm not sure that all the funding issues have been addressed and I don't, haven't seen a feasibility study about why we need to tear it down. It says we don't have the money to build a new structure. Do we have money to maybe take off the addition and bring it up to, you know, some kind of? My point is, there's all kinds of things I haven't heard anything about. So, and I'm sure you people have had discussions that I'm unaware of. So if we could, we could address those issues as far as stewardship and financing and being creative and keeping, keeping what is Punagorda, still Punagorda. That's where the kids used to play baseball. I mean, they would have, like, if it was a homerun, it depends on where this tree was. If the ball went in the water, that was, the history of that park and the youth is huge. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Make your way to the microphone. About to give a last call. So if you really want to speak, you need to line up now.
Hi, my name is Larry Jaeger. I live on Red Espinade. What we're doing is we're talking about a park. A park is a place for grass, bushes, trees, a place for kids to go outside and get in the sun and do activities. It's not about a mammoth building that's air-conditioned where people can sit inside and drink beer and eat fried fish. This is just wrong.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, we are going to have to take a five-minute health break for your city council and Chuck will load up his presentation while we are taking a, it's already loaded up and we'll be ready to go. It is 10:44, so we're going to do six minutes.